All right, DJ Ramon, come on. Here we go. Oh, you want to get in on this? Come on. You're just the hype man? But you need a DJ name as a hype man.
Yeah, mine is John Lee.
Okay, all right. Stole his name. You might have to battle him for that. That might be what happens.
Good morning. Almost noon now. DJ Council, the immigrant story and ours too. Council members often speak about hotel workers as a reflection of the immigrant story in Los Angeles. But please don't forget that we are also immigrants. We came to this country with little and risked the built a small and a family-run hotels, often with our own hands and savings. Our story is just much as a part of the American dream. This policy paints all hotels with the same brush, ignoring the fact that many of us are independent, immigrant-owned, and as a small businesses, not a billion-dollar corporations. We need your support in carrying us out from this huge burden going to be to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Speaker. The floor is yours. You have a minute.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Tim Do. I'm here to provide public comment on item three. I am a licensed and legal cannabis operator, paid over $8 million in city taxes to the city of Los Angeles, and I employ 200 people who are USCW certified. How are we supposed to survive as one of 400 licensed stores in Los Angeles when we're forced to compete against 4,000 unlicensed shops with a 40% tax advantage? L.A. is a mess. The DCR is broken. The apathy shone to us as a licensed and legal industry last night by the Cannabis Commission was appalling. You've heard us, legal operators, equity businesses, community advocates, with our enforcement, with beg for action. You have done nothing. You failed our most vulnerable entrepreneurs, our black and brown-owned businesses, the very people your social equity program was supposed to uplift. The city could have led. It's failed. We don't need more reports or task forces. We need action. We need it now. DCR does not need a pay increase. Freeze the taxes, freeze the zoning, and enforce the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Speaker. Please begin.
General public comments on item number three, please.
So, item three is in the special. We'll get to that later. Right now, it's just general public comment.
Gotcha. My name is Christopher Martinez. I'm a social equity stakeholder in District 10. We're just asking for a little bit of respect and your time to listen to us as stakeholders. We're sounding the alarm and need you guys to take corrective action to revive the dying industry that has supported this city by providing 17% of the total business tax revenue when we're a mere 0.3% of the total businesses. For the past three months, we've been calling for collaborative conversation with CRC about the dire state of the local cannabis industry and the urgent need for a tax decrease to keep the industry alive. Instead of engaging with us, operators, instead of engaging with operators on the ground who are struggling to survive, DCR has chosen to create a narrative focused on self-preservation, not common solutions. L.A. should lead by example. Now, we're attempting, or DCR is attempting to justify a 147% cost increase, putting that burden on our backs. It's not just a missed opportunity here. DCR and taxes are the knife in our back. We're asking for you to help take it out and heal the wound that is causing it.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Brinson, the owner of Green Paradise located at 1119 South La Brea in District 10. That's Heather Hush District. Council, I'm urging you to vote no on Jason Kille, everybody Colleen's fee study. The fee study is they're stealing. This man and his cult at the DCR have stolen every single cent promised to small businesses like mine. His colleague Andrew Westhall just tried to assault me in the hallway because he hates the pressure of what he's done. Y'all have fucked up my business, my family, my life, all because of this stupid-ass program y'all told us to be a part of. I share a wall with an illegal store that I tell y'all constantly about that you haven't done shit about yet. None of Jason Colleen's fee study is correct. It's all a lie, just like this social equity scam program. I pray to God, and I pray to God, that Andrew Westhall, Hurry Weston, Marquise Harris Dawson, Cat Packer, and Jason Colleen, and Emani Brown are all investigated by the FBI for the harm they have caused to the very people this program was meant to help.
Thank you.
Yes. Good morning, City Council members. My name is Angelica Salas, Executive Director of Chirla, and I am gathered here with our members from Chirla. Today, I'm here to urge the City Council to save the Represent L.A. program that has been excluded from the mayor's proposed budget. The program was created to provide legal representation to immigrant Angelenos and to protect them from attacks and intimidations of the federal administration in 2017. It was funded at $1 million. Under the current Trump administration, there are arrests, disappearances, and mass deportations. More than ever, we need to protect our constitutional right to due process. The current memo recommendation strips the city's funding from Represent L.A., putting us on a path to ending the program and current recipients of the program losing representation. Immigrants contributed $53 billion in the economy to the federal, state, and local taxes, and they consume, they have incredible spending power. That should be enough to fund $1 million for this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, Speaker. You have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Rodriguez. I'm a social equity owner, and my dispensary has been open for a year and a half. I'm here to tell you that there are a lot of issues with how we're regulated. However, the single biggest challenge to operating a dispensary in the city of Los Angeles is the taxes. I work hard to educate people on the benefits and safety on buying legally, but it's difficult when the city is slow to close down illegal shops and our prices are automatically almost doubled because of the amount of taxes you're requiring them to pay. People are struggling financially all over, and they aren't going to pay for something they can get tax-free somewhere else. It's making the value of our licenses worth nothing. We're in a crisis, and we need your help. Allow us to continue the supposed opportunity by the city and lower the cannabis tax rate to less than 1%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace Pickering, and I work at Fig Trees, a licensed social equity dispensary here in our city. I'm here today because I love my job and I care deeply about the community we serve. Fig Trees provides safe access to cannabis, supports equality in this industry, and creates real jobs for real people, including me. But right now, we're struggling to survive under the weight of the overwhelming taxes. If something doesn't change, Fig Trees may be forced to close, and I, along with 10 of our coworkers, will lose our livelihoods. This isn't just about business. It's about people. It's about equity, and it's about the promises made to communities like ours who are meant to have a fair shot in this space. We are asking you to please reconsider the tax structure, give small dispensaries like ours a fighting chance, help us stay open, stay employed, and continue serving the community we are proud to be a part of. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Mike Corvington. I'm a vertically integrated operator in District 7, represented under Monica Rodriguez. I'm here to urge you to reject the DCR's proposed 133% fee increase. These hikes come with no added value to licensees, no improved services, and no added support or any real reform. I understand the city and the state are facing budget challenges. Raising the fees and taxes on cannabis operators and consumers is not the solution. This approach is driving more businesses out of the legal market and pushing consumers back to the unregulated one. That doesn't help the city. It cuts off tax revenue and creates serious public health risks. What we need is internal accountability. There's been a clear lack of leadership and mismanagement within the agencies that oversee this industry. There's a complete disconnect between the regulators and the stakeholders. People are increasing costs on anybody who are barely hanging on. The city should conduct a full audit of the DCR.
Thank you. Hi, Speaker. You have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Brandy Brown. I'm a social equity license holder. I was arrested every year of high school for consuming and a loss apparent to the prison system under the RICO Act. So, I fit the qualifications fully, fulfill my requirements, and it's been seven years later, and I have no store, I have no money, and I'm in tax debt, and I've been nothing but preyed upon by bad actors in this space that are allowed to operate freely. I'm left holding the tax bag, and I'm in personal debt, and I have to pay more fees if I want to remain in this business. June the 22nd, I have to pay another $3,500 fee. The fees are excessive. The taxes are ridiculous. No other industry is facing this unfair taxation that the cannabis business is going through. We want the DCR audited. We want them investigated, and we want the DCR dissolved. We want Jason Colleen resigned for ways fraud and abuse. Okay? We split up twice for a potential tax meeting.
Thank you.
Twice now. Thank you. Do the right thing.
Hello. You have a minute. Please begin.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Isabel Beltrán, y soy parte de Chirla. Y hago los miembros del Consejo que salve el programa. Representa a los Ángeles. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Isabel Beltrán, and I am from Chirla. Adelante, señora. Después de presentarse, puede empezar. De mi raíz es cultura y ser latina. I am Latina, and I have cultural roots. And I'm proud to be part of the L.A. community. Pero en este momento estoy muy decepcionada porque yo recuerdo abogar por este programa desde el 2017. Y cada año nos han salido con la misma. I remember having advocated for this opportunity in 2017. So, we're asking you to continue to help to fund this program. Ustedes no saben lo feo que es ser testigo de ver la separación de una familia. Actualmente, el programa tiene casos activos, y ustedes le quieren quitar. So, you don't understand. You haven't witnessed how sad it is, how ugly it is to watch a family be separated. And this program currently still has open cases. Esa reparación que de sección tiene la oportunidad de mantener a familias unidas. And through this reparation, we're able to keep families united and keep them together. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call a few more names. Melissa Tomeo, Ernesto Ayala, and Judith Serlin.
Hello.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Rivera.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Rivera.
Soy parte de Chirla. Urjo a los miembros del Consejo que salven el programa. Representa a Los Angeles.
I am representing Chirla, and I am please begging the council members to approve the motion, Represent Los Angeles.
Inmigrantes hacemos más del 30% de Los Angeles. Hemos pagado más de 50 mil millones en impuestos a nivel federal, estatal, y local.
And we immigrants represent more than 20% of Los Angeles, and we pay more than $50,000 in taxes at the state, federal, and local levels.
Muchos de nosotros, de una forma o de otra, venimos a luchar y a sacar a nuestros hijos adelante, aunque nos siguen poniendo trabas, y en este momento estamos exigiendo un poco de lo que merecemos.
Yeah, and most of us are just trying to come out on top despite facing all these obstacles, and even then, we are still trying to be here advocating to receive what we deserve.
Apoyen el programa de representar a Los Angeles con un millón para proteger a nuestros derechos y nuestra representación universal. Gracias.
And support the program, Represent L.A., so that we may support our rights universally all around. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Ernesto Ayala. I'm one of the coordinators at the Day Labor Centers with IDEPSCA. I just, there's a lot of talk here today about inclusion, diversity, immigrants, and the history of this city, yet we, you know, and this city proudly proclaimed itself a sanctuary city, and in 2019 claimed El Dia del Jornalero, or Day Labor Day. Yet, we are having our funds cut to these centers that provide a safe haven for migrant workers and other community members. We are asking you to please do not cut funding to our Day Labor Centers. Keep them funded, keep these centers in our community that help immigrant workers and other community members have a space where they feel safe. So, again, you know, with everything that's going, all the words that are being said here today, let's not make those empty words and slogans. Let's make them a reality in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Melissa. Soy trabajadora de lugar. Vengo a pedirles que dan, para que den fondos para los Centros Jornaleros.
Hello, yes, my name is Melissa. I am a domestic worker at the Day Labor Center, and we are asking for you guys to allocate funds to the Day Labor Center.
Eso es muy importante, que estén abiertos los servicios especialmente en este momento que lo que necesitamos.
It's very important for these resource centers to stay open so that our services may continue, so that we may receive these services as well.
Para poder pagar la renta y los gastos de la casa.
To be able to pay our rent and our living expenses.
Y para sobrevivir.
And to survive.
Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name is Judith Serlin, and I'm with the Teamsters. I recognize the crossing guards in the room and those who are out at the worksite. Crossing guards help children and their caregivers negotiate busy streets. They save lives. They're also a really important part of the neighborhood's safety fabric, and they play an important role in public safety. Mayor Bass, when she provided budget and finance with instructions, said to address cost and minimize layoffs. The Budget and Finance Committee's proposal includes laying off 460 crossing guards in order to save 97 traffic officers and 54 vacant positions. Someone got the math wrong. So, let's talk cost. The department has said that traffic officers will be able to do the work performed by crossing guards. Crossing guards are part-time, non-benefited employees. Traffic officers are full-time, benefited. Again, you need to look at the math. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. That'll conclude. Thank you. That concludes public comment for our regular meeting. We're going to ask everybody to stop disrupting the meeting. Mr. Clerk, we're going to recess the regular meeting.
For the members of the audience, we're going into the special meeting, in which we'll be considering, among other things, the living wage ordinance. So, you'll have another opportunity to speak on the items in the special meeting.
If I may, sir, call the roll for the special meeting. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Burado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavski, 14 members. President Quan, Mr. President. All right. All right, we're going to proceed with our business this morning. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items two and three are items for which public hearings have not been held. An updated city attorney report and draft ordinance stated May 15, 2025, has been submitted and uploaded to Council File Number 14-1371-S13.
Okay, so the gentleman with the dark hair and the ponytail who's riling up the crowd, you're being warned to stop right now.
I believe it's Mr. Segarra Bolinger. All right, we got the gentleman with the ponytail and the black shirt has disrupted the meeting repeatedly. He's ordered removed pursuant to Rule 7.
Okay, Mr. Segarra Bolinger, you've been ordered removed, the gentleman in the center aisle, right now. Mr. Segarra, you've been ordered to relieve quietly. You've been ordered removed from the meeting. Please leave quietly now.
This is your second and last warning. Any further disruption, you will be removed from the meeting. Now, we will begin public comment and hear from the public on items two and three in the special meeting. Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you can repair us.
Just, so for members of the public, this is a special meeting, so we're taking public comment only on the two items on the agenda.
Sergeants and city attorney, for the record, this gentleman in a black t-shirt has threatened to come to my house twice as he's exiting the building, for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Quan, so just to be clear for the members of the public, the items before us are item two, which is an assertion of jurisdiction under Charter Section 245 of the Board of Fire Commissioners Clean Air Harbor Environmental Services Agreement. And item three is an ordinance, first consideration in city attorney report relative to the living wage ordinance and hotel worker minimum wage ordinance, and adding and amending to the municipal code regarding increased wages and healthcare benefits provided to hotel and airport workers in the city. So, when your name is called, please let us know which or both of the two items you want to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak. There is no general public comment, so you must speak to either or both of these items. You have one minute per item maximum.
All right, and just for the record, folks, we're going to be taking 15 minutes of public comment on this, so when your name is called, please come up expeditiously and give your testimony so we can get to as many speakers as we can in our 15-minute allotted time.
Hi, Speaker. Which item or items did you want to speak on?
Minimum wage.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Conno. I am currently the Office Administrator Assistant at Boulevard Hotel and Studios located in Studio City. I genuinely enjoy my job, especially the flexibility it offers me as a mother of two young children. I have been with Boulevard Hotels since 2019, starting as a front desk receptionist. While the idea of increasing the minimum wage sounds beneficial, particularly given the current economic climate, I am concerned about its potential impact on Boulevard Hotel and Studios. With our occupancy already being low, this change could unfortunately lead to the hotel's closure. Alternatively, to manage increased labor costs, the company might be forced to reduce staff, which could mean the loss of my position and the difficulty of finding another job that offers the same crucial flexibility I need for my family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, Speaker. Which item or items did you want to speak on?
Item number three, minimum wage.
You have a minute. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Marisol Claro. I am with Boulevard Hotel and Studios. I am the general manager. I've been with them since 2011, and though I support an increase in minimum wage, I am concerned of what this would cost to our small, limited-service hotel, given the post-pandemic business that we're in now. Unfortunately, we are struggling to meet payroll currently due to tourism being down, therefore revenue and the increase of labor costs is something we cannot absorb. I understand that this is important. However, we are facing a different world when it comes to tourism for our small businesses. For the first time, we are forced to compete with the big, you know, hotels that we didn't have to do that before, and this increase would ultimately lead to the closure of our property, as small as we are, and therefore causing the loss of both my job and my staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Good morning. Johnny G., one of my 10 dames, because I can't be called by Candido. Item three, sir.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Here we have those who dream, immigrants who come here and build and learn and change. Over here, we have the immigrants who work hard, but you're not learning enough. You need to learn more. But don't depend on them. Don't depend on them, because they're only organizers. They're the people that supposedly represent you, but look what they do here. Look what they do here. You've brought so much disgrace to this city with the corruption, with Martinez, with others who have degraded this city. So, thank you, those of you who are immigrants, who have come on both sides and who are building this city and making this a greater place to live. Thank both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mars.
Rob Quan, Joe M., Narish Bhakta.
Hello, Mr. Quan. Which item or items did you want to speak to?
Just the special.
Go ahead.
I wonder what happened. What happened on Wednesday? Why are we here? Why are we doing a do-over? And why is Favel in the big chair and not Groth? Did something happen? I mean, we just saw Marquise shut down public comment after 20 minutes. He's going to give you 15 minutes right now. This is not somebody who likes public comment. He would not reopen public comment for no damn reason. So, I wonder, is anybody around the horseshoe going to talk about it? Are we going to do anything about this? I mean, you might not care about public comment, but when it comes to the Brown Act, you can really get into some trouble when you mess things up like this. And what was the rush? Very, very interesting. I'll just end by saying I'm happy to see the appointments, but they better be on the agenda that comes out this afternoon, or else you know what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Buenas tardes. ¿Sobre cuáles puntos quiere hablar? Sobre el salario olímpico.
The Olympic wage. Adelante.
Minute.
Como saben ustedes, mi nombre es Laura Esquivel y trabajo en el aeropuerto de Los Ángeles.
Yes, as many of you know, my name is Laura Esquivel, and I work at LAX Airport.
Estoy aquí una vez más para darles y agradecerles a las personas que votaron por nosotros.
I am once again here to give a thank you to all the people who voted for us.
Y darles gracias porque esto se llevó a cabo y se hizo justicia para los trabajadores del aeropuerto.
And thank them because this was carried out and justice was given for the airport workers of Los Angeles.
Estamos una vez más aquí.
We are once again here.
Dando gracias por el gran cambio que hicieron y por la justicia que se hizo hacia nosotros, las trabajadores.
We are here saying thank you to you for the big change that was made, giving justice to all the workers.
Aunque algunas personas, que ya sabemos quiénes, no estuvieron de acuerdo.
Even though some people, and we know who those people were, were not in agreement with this.
Solo quiero decirles que por humanidad y respeto, nosotros somos seres humanos y nos merecemos un salario mejor para nuestras familias.
And I just want to say with humanity and respect that we are human beings, and we deserve a fair wage so that we may support our families.
Un mejor cuidado médico.
And better medical coverage.
Ya que nosotros somos los que estamos enfrente.
Because we are the ones in the front lines.
Y nosotros hacemos que el aeropuerto funcione.
And we make the airport function.
Gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
Counselors, this is more directed to you. There's issues going on, are not accommodating individuals in the public, in the horseshoe. And I'll send you an email accordingly, unless you want Mr. Groth to be the lead on this or someone else. It needs to be addressed. It doesn't mean someone has to drop everything to accommodate. There just needs a different process, because there's certain deputies with certain council offices that think that the ADA is exempt from public government, and that needs to stop.
Send me an email, please.
Okay, thank you, councils.
There just needs a different process because there's certain deputies with certain council offices that think that the ADA is exempt from public government and that needs to stop.
Send me an email, please.
Okay, thank you, Counselors.
Hi Speaker, which item or items did you want to speak on?
I'm going to speak on one and three.
One was in the regular meeting, but you've got three on the living wage stuff, so we'll give you a minute, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. My name is Ishman Babro, social equity dispensary owner here in the city of Los Angeles. Hi, Ms. Hunt, I live in your district. Sir, you know who I am. You know, you guys sit here, you guys act like the people don't mean nothing, but we're the ones who put you where you are.
So Speaker, sorry to do this to you, but the only items that are open for public comment now are the assertion of jurisdiction of fire commissioners and the living wage ordinance regarding hotels and the airport. Do you want to speak to either of those?
I know, but I just want them to know that I see how they all are, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will be voting you out, you know who you are, I'm District 10, huh?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Keishen Hira, I'm here to talk about the number two for the hotel workers ordinance.
Please go ahead.
My family is planning to build a 77-unit hotel in the city of Los Angeles, specifically in Mrs. Hut's district. We are a small, family-run corporation. We don't build luxury hotels for wealthy travelers. We build mid-scale hotels for everyday families living in Los Angeles and for budget-minded travelers. This project is ready to go, we've secured all the necessary permits and approvals, we could start building tomorrow. For this project to be viable, you need to carve limited-service hotels from this ordinance, just like the city of Long Beach did for their hoteliers. Without it, we simply can't afford to move forward, I'll have to move the project to Long Beach. Our goal is to offer rooms at about $100 per night, not 300 like a high-end hotel. I want to keep things affordable and accessible, but the added burdens this measure would impose, that price point is impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
Ray Patel, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember John Lee, Councilman Park, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Padilla, and Councilman Adrian for your support Wednesday to support the small businesses, family-owned, immigrant-owned hotels in the city of Los Angeles, which are referred to as limited-service hotels that are predominantly renting to Los Angelinos. Today, we're here to ask again for you to consider on this reading a carve-out for the limited-service hotels. The similar ask that we had in Long Beach and a city south of here, I believe it's the fifth-largest in LA County that also caters to tourist hotels, convention business, arts districts, beautiful city. Their city council and the mayor recognized the fact that their limited-service hotels cater to their citizenry and they wanted to make sure that they supported the small business ownership there and they carved them out. We ask you to still consider carving out the limited-service hotels, especially today when you're supporting so many immigrant communities here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Speaker.
Mr. Marquis, I want to say thank you on behalf of all the people that live in your district. This living wage is going to pass, is going to impact because we can no longer live in our cities. Yesterday was historic day, y'all should have been here, y'all missed it. And I just want to say that we need to move forward. We can no longer wait because the increases that's coming here in the city and we're getting kicked out of the city. So this is a reason why we need to pass this wage, we've been waiting on it for the past two years. So let's there be no more amendments, let's there be no more holdups. The study has showed that when you invest in Angelinos, the Angelino is going to invest back in the city because this money is going to go back to the city. So thank you very much, city council members, for your leadership yesterday, we just made history, thank you.
Thank you.
So, members, what happened was, I made a mistake. When I got a sentence from the fire department that said there is no recent violations in the city of Los Angeles, I did what should otherwise be reasonable, I believed them. They're either going to tell us 2021 to 2025 is not recent, or they're going to tell us that mixing materials at the site and not containing them and overloading bins is not a health code violation, or they're going to tell me that Wilmington is not in the city of Los Angeles. You pick one. One of those has to be true for you to have told me the truth. One of those has to be true, otherwise, probably the second biggest fib I've gotten from the fire department in the past week. I'm going to ask you members for us to assert jurisdiction. If this happens somewhere else in the city, if this happened in your district, I'd be behind you. If it happened in the valley, I'd be with you. If it happened in the nice part of the valley, I'd be with you. If it happened on the west side, I'd be with you. It happened in Wilmington and it happens over and over and over and over again in Wilmington. And you know who's doing it to us? Not some company offshore, the fire department. Enough! Members, I humbly ask you to assert jurisdiction, send this back to committee, because I will not put up with it. And if any one of you want to take this into your jurisdiction, you can have it.
Yeah, we're working with our city attorney Sam Petty. We're looking at a workaround if we can't use Clean Harbors for another agency with a piggyback contract. So right now, we're actively working on a solution.
Okay, well, Councilmember McCusker, you're already standing up. While I support your 245, I just want to make sure that we have something in place where we are actually picking up hazardous waste because I'm hearing the same things that Captain Jones explained yesterday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you to our Public Safety Chair, Mr. McCusker.
Yeah, I'm going to say figure it out. If this is the biggest problem we have facing the city of Los Angeles, we're doomed. Figure it out. Because I have chapter and verse of violations at the site in Wilmington. And I am not going to stand by some assertion that the quality of life at a firehouse is more important than the quality of life for a resident in the city of Wilmington. I'm tired, I'm tired of, because this will be the second time in a week that the fire department asserts that their lives and their comfort is more important than the comfort of the lives of our residents. So I'm just going to say figure it out.
Yes, sir, we want to make this work, any way we can get this done to protect the public and fire stations, we want to make it work to get the oil picked up.
It didn't sound much like this is about protecting the public. It sounded a lot like this is about the convenience of getting the oil out of the firehouses and putting it into a facility in Wilmington that may or may not be in violation of its current standards. I just want to hear, I don't want to hear that they have no violations and then find out that there's a federal case that was going on for four years at the same time that I was told there were no violations. That's all, that's not a question.
Thank you, Mr. McCusker, I think there are no more speakers on the queue, so Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so to be clear, this is a vote to assert jurisdiction and if the vote passes, refer the matter to the committee.
All right.
For the record, sir, 10 votes are required to adopt the motion.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, let's open the roll on updating.
Is there a motion for this, sir?
I move that we update the motion, is there a second? Councilmember Hurado?
Thank you.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 noes.
The ordinance will be held over to Friday, May 23, 2025 for second consideration.
All right, what's next?